Craft it to whatever, however it needs to be. Two minutes, whatever it is.
Yep.
That's my argument.
Good morning. I will call to order the April 6, 2023, Clackamas County Board of Commissioners Business Meeting. County Administrator Gary Schmidt, would you please take the role?
Yes, Chair Smith. First, our staff support today, County Council Stephen Madcor, Clerk to the Board Tony Maranick. Commissioner Savis will be here momentarily. Role call, Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner West.
Here.
Commissioner Scholl.
Here.
Chair Smith.
Here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. We are holding this meeting in person and virtually. If you've joined us via Zoom for this meeting and are interested in providing public comment, we will prompt you regarding how to do that when the time is right. I would like to remind all participants, including staff, all elected officials and members of the public that Robert's Rules of Order will be followed in this meeting. We welcome your opinions and look forward to your polite participation. Gary, can you please introduce the first item?
Yes, Chair Smith. First is the Housing Authority Consent Agenda. Chair, if you would please convene as the Housing Authority.
I will recess as the Board of County Commissioners and convene as a Housing Authority for Clackamas County.
Joining you online is Housing Commissioner Anne Leenstra. Good morning, Commissioner Leenstra.
Good morning.
This is the Housing Authority Request, Housing Authority Consent Agenda. Tony, would you please read the consent agenda?
Housing Authority Consent Agenda, one item, Approval of Resolution 1974 Regarding the Fiscal Year 2023 Annual Plan and Moving to Work Supplement Required for Grant Funding from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Anticipated grant value is $30 million. No county general funds are involved.
Thank you. Does any Commissioner wish to remove this item from the consent agenda? Anne, would you please make a motion?
I move we approve the Housing Authority Consent Agenda.
One second.
Commissioner Anne Leenstra has moved for the Housing Authority Consent Agenda for the approval, and Commissioner West has seconded the motion. Any further discussion?
I would just like to thank the Anne Leenstra people for utilizing this money to bring some housing stability to people who need it and helping them on their way to housing independence. Thank you, Anne.
You're welcome.
Yes, I echo those thoughts, too. Tony, please take the poll.
Commissioner Leenstra.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Anne, for coming today.
Thank you.
I will now adjourn as a Housing Authority of Clackamas County and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners. Gary, what's next?
Next is a presentation. The first one is Approval of a Resolution Proclaiming April 2023 as Grange Month in Clackamas County. Our presenter today is Joyce Parker, who is the President of the Pomona Grange Number One here in Clackamas County. Joyce, please come forward to the center table.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself and the reason, and pull the microphone really close so we can hear. Thank you.
Pull the microphone close. Got it. Good morning, Commissioners. I am Joyce Parker. I am the Master President of the Clackamas County Pomona Grange, which is made up of the 16 subordinate Granges in our county. The oldest Granges in Clackamas County that still are in existence are Frog Pond Number 111, which is near Wilsonville, Warner Grange Number 117 in the New Era area, just down the street here, and Harding Grange Number 122, which is located in the Logan area. All of these Granges were organized in 1874.
Wow.
The Granges in Clackamas County are involved in many different community service projects, including hosting Red Cross blood drives, cleaner distribution sites, other food distribution programs, providing meeting spaces for forage clubs, Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts. Grange halls are also available to rent and are used by a variety of community groups depending on the needs of that community. Clackamas County Pomona Grange, as our community service project, supports the Clackamas County Veterans Village. We are again doing our annual collection of items for the village. We focus on cleaning supplies for the village, and we will be having those brought to our meeting at the end of April. We also, when we hear that there are veterans that are going to permanent housing, we check in to see if there are things that they would need, dressers, those kind of things. And if we have those, we provide those for veterans going to their permanent housing. And you all are probably aware that Clark's Grange prepares and serves a Sunday dinner once a month at the Veterans Village. Legislative action is an important part of the Grange. We are nonpartisan, and we do not endorse candidates, but we work on issues that are important to rural communities. Last fall, we had the opportunity to host the Candidates Forum for two of the Commissioner races and the county clerk position. One of the issues that we are working on and have discussed in the last few months is the tolling of I-205. And at our quarterly meeting in January, we passed a resolution to oppose the tolling of I-205 freeway, which will go to our state convention to be approved, hopefully, by the delegate body there and become policy of the Oregon State Grange. Each of our community Granges is the hub of that community and does projects which benefit the community they are located in. Grange membership is open to anyone interested in building a better community. I am lucky today to have with me Grangers from two other Granges in the county, from Warner Grange, Brother Don Kingsborough, and his daughter Holly Benz, and from Redlin Grange, Sister Georgine Barrigan and Sister Courtney Ray. I am pleased that you are willing to do a proclamation, and I assume I just read from the top.
Well, I'd like to ask you a question first, President Joyce. Thank you for bringing this forward. It's always a joy for this board to participate in this activity. When is your state convention?
Our state convention will be, it will start on Saturday, June 17th this year, and it will be at the Polk County Fairgrounds in Rickroyal.
Okay. And if you pass that proclamation, is that what you call it, on tolling?
A resolution, in Grange talk.
And if that's successful, would you make sure that you send it to us?
Certainly.
You can do that via email if you'd like.
Okay. We will make note of to do that.
And before you read the proclamation, do Commissioners have any questions at this time? Yes, go ahead.
President Parker, every year I get invited to the Boring Grange for their strawberry waffles made with the Townsend Farm hood strawberries. And I want to know what other Granges have better strawberry waffles, and I want an invitation to them because, okay, because I really enjoy it. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Scholl, the only other Grange that does a strawberry thing is Spring Water, and we do a strawberry shortcake on the Saturday before the strawberry waffle breakfast.
That's good information. Thank you.
Commissioner West.
See, I was on the fence about the waffles, but I'm definitely in on the shortcake.
Commissioner Schrader?
Yeah, I'm gonna double down on both. I used to grow strawberries. I grew hoods and I used to bring them all over Portland to deliver. So I don't do it anymore, but I sure love the shortcake and the waffles. So let us know, okay?
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Savis?
Yeah, well, I've attended both those events, at both those two Granges and other Granges. So some of the Granges you named off, I've been to a lot of them, but not all of them. But I just want to just share my appreciation for what the Granges do to their community and kind of bring a place and a community together. So I applaud that. I just always enjoy visiting the Grange and some of those events. So applaud for everything that you all do. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, Granges have some of the best food around because it's made from people like my mother. And I love that. I'm a member of Clark's Grange, and generations, we go back as members of Clark's Grange. And it is a very active Grange, still, with multi-generations, which is nice. President Joyce, would you like to read this proclamation into the record?
Okay. Before the Board of County Commissioners of Clackamas County, State of Oregon, in the matter of a proclamation declaring April 2023 as Grange Month in Clackamas County. Whereas since 1867, the Grange has been a grassroots movement for the benefit of American families and local communities. And whereas Grange programs are family-oriented, beginning with a junior Grange program for children ages four to 13 for the purpose of getting children involved in their community agriculture and learning good citizenship. And whereas Grange activities support personal development, leadership seminars, and foster a wide range of useful skills and abilities for personal growth through social, cultural, and educational programs. And whereas Grange members attend public meetings, inform themselves of local, state, and national issues, and speak on behalf of those working in agriculture, producing food, fuel, and fiber. And whereas members of the 16 active Granges in Clackamas County ignite a passion in the community for service and involvement, and outcomes of Grange advocacy are felt by nearly every citizen of Clackamas County today. Therefore, now therefore, the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim April 2023 as Grange Month in Clackamas County. We urge the citizens of the county to recognize and participate in Grange activities and support Clackamas County Granges. Dated the 6th day of April 2023, and it has place for you to sign and the Secretary to sign.
I would be more than happy to sign. That's almost 150 years of the oldest Grange in Clackamas County, almost six generations.
Yep.
If 25 years is a generation.
We do have a legacy program at the National Grange that recognizes families who have had five or more generations in the Grange, and we have several of those families in our county.
So nationwide, I'm putting you on the spot. What would be the oldest Grange in America, do we know? You know what? Sorry to put you on the spot.
Yeah, you did kind of put me on the spot. They would be in the New England area.
Sure.
New York, Pennsylvania, somewhere up in that area would be the oldest Granges in the nation.
Probably the Amish community is still carrying on in Pennsylvania, would be my guess, but I don't know. Well, this is very nice. Commissioners, I will entertain a motion. It's written down for us.
I move to approve the resolution proclaiming April 2023 as Grange Month in Clackamas County.
Second. Commissioner Scholl has moved we approve the resolution proclaiming April 2023 as Grange Month in Clackamas County. Commissioner Schrader has seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Tony, please take the poll.
Commissioner Scholl.
Aye.
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you and your fellow Grange people for coming today. We enjoy your presence and appreciate all that you offer for the generations on Grange activities.
Thank you, Chair Smith.
Bye-bye.
We're gonna have a photo opportunity, please, Commissioners.
That's right. Right here. Stand there.
Oh, we got a good one in there. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
You, too.
Good to see you guys.
The shortcake. I didn't know about the shortcake.
Oh, that was fun.
Gary, what's next on the agenda?
Next is another presentation. It is Approval of a Resolution Supporting a Recovery-Oriented System of Care in Responding to the Addictions, Mental Health, and Homelessness Crisis in Clackamas County. Commissioner West had brought forward this proposal. There also in front of you, so in front of you is the original resolution draft, and Commissioner Savis has provided a redlined version for some additional edits for your consideration, but that is entirely up for your discussion today. Commissioner West, if you'd like to kick it off with your proposal and your ideas, and then Chair Smith will guide the discussion.
Thank you. Homelessness is a complicated topic that we all grapple with in our communities daily. Some of us in this room, or people we love, have struggled with this issue for various reasons. Or maybe even some of us, or those that we love, have been on the brink of homelessness, and that's been a real reality for them. This resolution came out of a desire to be clear about a portion of the population that suffers from homelessness with an intersection that they have with drug addiction and mental illness, and how we have seen that crisis explode in a way that none of us ever probably thought possible. One thing that I'm heartened over is that many in our community and most in our community want to do something about it as we debate important policy issues to come to those common goals. I think that this resolution helps to create a framework that can inform the actions of this board moving forward. As a dad in the community that recently had to have a conversation with my son about fentanyl, as a nurse that has cared for this population in various aspects within our healthcare system, from the emergency room to the hospital floor to outpatient care and within our correctional system, this is an issue that I'm passionate about and one of the reasons why I ran to be a Clackamas County Commissioner. So I believe that this begins to speak to a real reality that our local governments and our state and many municipalities up and on the west coast have failed to rise to the occasion to call out and to speak to that reality that we all see with our own eyes every single day. Now, this resolution does not address the entirety of the homeless population, but it does address a significant chronic and persistent portion that I think we need to be focused on helping get care, hope, self-sufficiency, clean, and sober. And so I hope and I urge other municipalities and counties throughout the state of Oregon to maybe also consider this resolution or something similar to it. As local governments struggle to solve this problem, we begin to say that there is a narrative that has been far too long ignored and divested from in our communities, and we are tired of seeing them hollowed out by inaction and bad policy. And this starts with a visionary, bold statement from this county. And I hope that this helps us achieve that goal moving forward. And so with that, I will have discussion or whatever the next process is moving forward. I look forward to reading this eventually into the record. All of you have had input. All of you, I value your input immensely. And I know there's so much commonality in our interest to solve this. And I don't think that this is possible without a board like this that is so cohesive as we really struggle on this issue. So I don't know what the next step is, Chair, but I can even open it up for discussion with the rest of the Commissioners.
Yeah, I'll open it for discussion. I see two people in the queue. I'm not sure who was first. Who wants to go, Martha or Mark?
Oh, I'd be happy to go first.
Mr. Scholl, please.
I would like to thank Commissioner West for his work on this resolution. What it is to me, it is taking a deep breath, a moment of reflection on the pressing issues of homelessness, addiction, and mental health. And it weighs what has worked, what has not worked amongst cities up and down the west coast and across the nation. And I see this resolution as a concept, a concept for how we might address the road ahead and make true change, true progress in dealing with some of these problems that Commissioner West has mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Schrader?
So I have a pragmatic question. I've got two in front of me.
Yep.
Which one? I see that Commissioner Savis, you wordsmithed one. And have you both come to an agreement that the wordsmithed one is a good way to go?
We have had, unfortunately, just with like, we haven't had as much conversations as we probably would have liked, but we have not come to a total agreement on those two.
For the record, I just received the redlined version in the email this morning at 9:30. And I think that that was obviously not adequate time to consider the edits. But Commissioners, it's really up to you. Commissioner Savis, you're up.
Yeah, I want to, you know, thank and recognize Commissioner West for drawing attention to this well-recognized gap in treatment for the homeless population and also very similarities between people that are not homeless and have similar kinds of needs. It was just a couple days ago where Commissioner West and I were in a conversation with some staff in the state who spoke to a study that was done, a gap analysis or a gap study, to talk about all the gaps in treatment for the homeless population and recognize that recovery is a huge gap and that it sounds like they intend to fill that. And I'm confident that they will attempt that. Prior to 2016, prior even to me coming on this board, I've been doing a lot of research in this area. I foresaw, unfortunately, that the trends in economics was going to force a lot of people out on the street. And there were certain trigger points along the way where I saw that accelerate. So in 2007, I recognized that as we were going into recession that we would see a burst, and that that came true. And also in 2015, when the housing prices and rental prices started hitting the rocket. If you look at those periods of time and the big leap in homeless counts, economics was a big factor in that. This state has divested in mental health treatment, unfortunately, right? And there's not a lot of detox recovery services, period, whether you're homeless or whether you need those treatments. It used to be, back in the old days, that only the wealthy, decades and decades ago, could afford drugs. And most of the people that were addicted were actually well-to-do people that had the means in which to purchase drugs, alcohol, those kinds of things. Now, with the proliferation of that and the low cost, our world has changed. So while I am a, and again, I apologize on Tuesday. I'll apologize again. I was so busy in the last week or so dealing with the other crisis that we're also working with, which, you know, is behind us. But I have not paid attention to this like I wanted to, and I haven't had the chance to chat. One other reflection I just want to note is that in my 12 years and different boards, typically, the resolution would come to us in a work session. Any resolution proposed would come to us in a work session, and we would work it all out and spend the time. And we are not having work sessions and those opportunities like we once had. So I know we've dabbled a few minutes here and a few minutes there, and I appreciate Commissioner West taking a little bit of time last night to speak with me and this morning. And I'm always a person who wants to get it as right as possible. I know that perfect is something we always strive for, but we don't get there. I get that. And I'm not trying to make it perfect. But I'm trying to understand also, and Ben and I had this conversation, or Commissioner West and I had this conversation this morning, what is the purpose of the resolution?
I want to offer a point of clarification. Commissioner Savis, we did discuss this at Tuesday's Issues and Updates. And I have been very generous and lenient. And any Commissioner can bring an item there, and that, too, can be a work session. So I disagree with your assessment that we have not had ample opportunity to work on this issue or any other issues. And I would appreciate if you would not misrepresent what this commission does.
Well, Chair, if I'm not going to be recognized to speak and have the floor, then I'll just exit this conversation.
I didn't say that. I was pointing clarification that we hadn't had ample opportunity. I said nothing about not contributing to this. We have had ample opportunity to contribute to this. Commissioners, this is up for discussion. What do you want to do with this? Commissioner Scholl?
Yeah, I appreciate Commissioner Savis's intent, concerns about detail. But this resolution is not about details. It is about concept. And concept is a bigger-picture look at the problem. That's, I think that is what this resolution does. The details of how we react, how we move forward with this enlightenment will come through interaction with the staff and future meetings. But this resolution is concept. And so I'm very satisfied with the way it's written.
Commissioner West.
I think this is a really emotional topic that we all care deeply about. And on this resolution, everybody made a concerted effort. It has been two or three weeks it's been in the docket. I've had long conversations, I think, with every one of you multiple times. I appreciate every Commissioner's input on this. Many of you have input and language in here that you guys have helped craft. And I actually, even though this has kind of gotten a little bit emotional for all of us, which I don't think is unusual, there's a lot with all five of us common ground on this resolution. And I think it is part of our commitment to be bold in how we govern as a county and as the policies we set forward as a board. And I see this as part of that. And so I hope today that we do choose to move forward with the resolution as written and begin to help lead, like I said, other counties, other jurisdictions with a similar resolution that we make sure in Oregon we make this recovery-oriented system of care a priority.
Thank you. Commissioner Schrader?
Yeah, I just feel badly that we have two Commissioners that wanted to have input. So Ben, would you mind meeting with Commissioner Savis and kind of just working this out? Or you want to vote today? I do agree that we need something of this kind because I think it is a gap in how we view homelessness. I mean, I think that's true. Another reason for homelessness, and just to get it on the record, is sometimes economics as well. Okay? So, but you're not talking about that continuum of people who, homelessness is a continuum. Some people fall into it because they have a medical crisis and they lose everything. Some people just get bad luck, and they end up living in their car. I have a friend that owns a retail store, for example, who hired this great young man. Fantastic worker, loves it. She found out he was living in his car. He's not addicted to anything, but he's living in his car. So as long as we recognize this continuum, and that's why I'm saying this. So as long as we recognize this continuum, and that's why I'm saying this publicly, I'm fine with this because I also think drug addiction, and frankly, if you become homeless for whatever reason and you're there, and that happens to you for a while, people can slip into things for self-medication. So I'm, I'm okay with this.
It's, can I interject really quick?
Yeah, yeah, but, but do, would you?
You added your economic piece into the final resolution.
Oh, yeah, 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 I have that. I know that, yeah.
And then there is, there is in the resolution a whereas that speaks to all of the other reasons beyond mental health or addiction that could be a factor in this. No one's, this isn't an either/or. This isn't defining the entire problem. This is speaking to this specific population that has an issue.
And that's the eight, number eight, correct?
Yeah, and there was, and that, yeah, and so we added, as you in the last meeting said, let's add economics, that was added.
Good.
And when I read, and when I read it into the record, I, if I'm the one who does that, that will, that will be apparent.
You'll be, you'll be the one that, that does that, and thank you for including that. But I do appreciate moving this forward because I do think that drug use is a huge problem and it needs to be addressed and we need to have that continuum of care that you've talked about. I'd love to work with you a little more on this if you get the time, if you mind.
I'd love to do anything.
Be snooping around, really? Okay. But I, would, if you can get a chance to repair, you know, I mean, talk to Commissioner Savis.
And we talked about this quite a bit last night, too.
Yeah, we did. I did have a conversation with you. I don't have an issue with this. Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Scholl, do you have a comment?
Well, my final comment would be that I'd like to thank the commissioners for all the time you spent looking at this and your inputs on it. I'd also like to thank the staff that helped us with this and reviewed it. So I think we have a good document here.
I, I like the documents. I like the input from everybody on this. You know, I think we need to view this as a working document. Okay? Let's accept something today. I'll entertain a motion, but as we move forward, I think we can view this as a working document. And in a year, if we need to come back and wordsmith and change something because we're updated, opportunities have changed, we can do that. I'm willing to do that if you folks want to do that.
Of course.
Commissioner Scholl, did you want to make a motion?
I'd like to. I move to approve the resolution supporting a recovery-oriented system of care in responding to the addictions, mental health, and homelessness crisis.
I'll second that.
Good.
Commissioner Scholl has moved, we, just a moment, just a moment, approve the resolution supporting recovery-oriented system of care in responding to the addictions, mental health, and homelessness crisis. Commissioner Schrader has seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Commissioner West.
I don't think I can add at this time.
I thought maybe you wanted to.
Well, I will read this if that's the appropriate time, Chair.
Can you read it before or after the vote? Doesn't matter.
Why don't you read it before the vote?
Okay. The Board of County Commissioners of Clackamas County, Oregon, in the matter of supporting a recovery-oriented system of care and responding to the addiction, mental health, and homelessness crisis. Whereas Clackamas County has identified drugs, crime, and untreated mental illness, of which homeless encampments are a symptom, as top threats to the health, safety, and flourishing of all its residents. And whereas Clackamas County believes in the dignity and worth of its residents and the comm, and the communal good that is achieved when residents are on a path towards the realization of their full potential. And whereas Clackamas County acknowledges that a significant and consequential portion of both those struggling with homelessness in the greater Portland area and throughout North America also contend with the complex disease of mental health and/or addiction, whether a precursor to or a result of homelessness. And whereas the U.S. Surgeon General specifically describes addiction as a brain disorder disease that results in the reduction of brain function that inhibits an individual's ability to make decisions and to regulate his or her actions, emotions, and impulses. And furthermore, that changes in the brain persist long after substance use stops and recognizes that addiction to alcohol or drugs is a chronic brain disease that has the potential for recurrence and recovery. And whereas Clackamas County recognizes that housing alone cannot cure mental illness or addiction, and the nature of addiction and serious mental illness can make sufferers unable to recognize their own illness or seek help willingly and benefit from a well-coordinated continuum of care to help them get the supports they need. And whereas Clackamas County agrees that open-air drug scenes create violence that is incompatible with the clean and vibrant public spaces and makes recovery from addiction more difficult. And whereas Clackamas County believes that harm reduction services, when not antithetical to a recovery-oriented system of care, can be effective in saving lives. Moreover, they must exist within a full continuum of compassionate care that includes prevention, intervention, treatment, and recovery for those suffering from addiction. And whereas Clackamas County identifies other contributing factors to homelessness, including domestic violence, experience in the child welfare system, economic and health crises, and physical and mental conditions, and is identifying strategies to address these factors. And whereas Clackamas County believes that all people have the right to a clean and vibrant public spaces as well as a safe emergency and transitional shelters when needed. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Clackamas County, that all efforts to address homelessness in which the county and its employees engage must be concentrated on helping all residents participate in realizing their full human potential by ensuring shelter, psychiatric, behavioral health, and addiction care for all who need it by protecting public spaces for the use of the entire community.
Thank you. I especially like the last paragraph under, therefore now it be resolved. Thank you. Any further discussion on this, Commissioners? Tony, would you please take the poll?
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0, and Commissioner Savis has left the dais. Up next, Gary.
Next is the consent agenda. Tony, would you please read the consent agenda?
Elected Officials. Item One, Approval of Previous Business Meeting Minutes for the Board of County Commissioners. Health Housing Human Services. Item One, Approval of a Local Subrecipient Grant Agreement with Micronesian Islander Community for the Commercial Tobacco Prevention Community Grant. Total Contract Value is $20,000 for six months. Funding is through the Oregon Health Authority. No County General Funds are involved. Item Two, Approval of an Intergovernmental Agreement with Multnomah County for Psychiatric Consult, Consultation Services. Agreement Value is $10,000 for nine months. Funding is through Oregon Health Authority and the Oregon Health Plan. No County General Funds are involved. Item Three, Approval of Amendment Two, Increasing Funding and Duration of a Personal Services Contract with Do Good Multnomah to Provide Supportive Services at Clayton Moore Commons. Amendment Value is $55,361.67 for three months. Contract Value has increased to $535,744.71 for three years and nine months. Funding is through Supportive Housing Services Funds. No County General Funds are involved. Finance. Item One, Approval of a Board Order, Adoption of a Board Order, Approving Issuance of a Purchase Order to Purchase the Controls for a Hot Water System, Chilled Water System, Condenser, and Associated Equipment from Johnson Controls Incorporated, Oregon. Purchase Order Value is $356,112. Funding is through Budgeted County General Funds. Item Two, Adoption of a Board Order, Approving Issuance of a Purchase Order to Purchase Magnetic Bearing Chiller, Three-Cell Cooling Tower and Associated Pumps from Johnson Barrow, Oregon. Purchase Order Value is $1,207,331,000, I'm sorry, $1,207,331. Funding is through Budgeted County General Funds. Item Three, Adoption of Board Order, Approving Issuance of a Purchase Order to Purchase Condensing Boilers from Procter Sales. Purchase Order Value is $279,670. Funding is through Budgeted County General Funds. Madam Chair, that concludes the list.
Thank you. Tony, does any commissioner wish to pull anything from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Seconded.
Commissioner West has moved the approval of the consent agenda, and Commissioner Scholl has seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Tony, please take the poll.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. I will now recess as a Board of County Commissioners and convene as a Waterman, Water Environment Services Board of Directors. Gary, what's next?
This is the consent agenda for Water Environment Services. Tony, would you please read the consent agenda?
Water Environment Services. Item One, Approval of a Personal Services Contract with Jacobs Engineering Group Incorporated for Telemetry Integration Consulting Services. Contract Value is $750,000 over five years. Funding through Water Environment Services Sanitary Sewer Operating Fund. No County General Funds are involved. Item Two, Approval of a Personal Services Contract with OCD Automation Incorporated for Telemetry Integration Consulting Services. Contract Value is $750,000 over five years. Funding is through Water Environment Services Sanitary Sewer Operating Fund. No County General Funds are involved. Item Three, Approval of a Public Improvement Contract with A Affordable Septic Service LLC for Fisher's Forest Park Large On-Site Sewage System Treatment Process Upgrade. Contract Value is $778,108. Funding is through Water Environment Services Sanitary Sewer Construction Funds. No County General Funds are involved. Item Four, Approval of a Personal Services Contract with Jacobs Engineering Group Incorporated to Provide Engineering Services for the Tri-City Clarifier Rehabilitation Project. Total Value is $1,174,243. Funding through Water Environment Services Sanitary Sewer Construction Funds. No County General Funds are involved. Madam Chair, that concludes the list.
Thank you, Tony. Does any commissioner wish to remove any items? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move for approval of the Water Environment Services Consent Agenda.
Commissioner Scholl has moved for approval of the Water Environment Services Consent Agenda, and Commissioner Schrader has seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Tony, please call the poll.
Director Savis?
Aye.
Director Schrader?
Aye.
Director West?
Aye.
Director Scholl?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. I will now adjourn as the Water Environment Services Board of Directors and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners. Gary, what's next?
Next is Public Communication, Chair.
Thank you. Next is Public Communication. This portion of the agenda shall be limited to items of county business which are properly the object of board consideration and should be nonpartisan nature as the BCC is a nonpartisan governing body under Oregon Revice Statutes and County Code. Testimony is limited to three minutes. Comments shall be respectful and courteous to all. As a reminder, you can email submissions for public comment at bcc@clackamas.us, and these will be accepted as part of the public record. I will now open the meeting for public testimony and take in-person testimony first. I have two cards. Up first is Aubrey Sappowitz. And we have a little bit more time today. Please come forward, Aubrey. State your name, area of residence, and continue.
Good morning, Commissioners and Mr. Matt Carr. My name's Aubrey Sappowitz.
And pull this real close so we can hear. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can you hear me now? Forgive me, I'm terrified of public speaking, so I'm extremely...
Oh, we don't mind. So go ahead. Yeah, you're just fine.
Okay. Good morning. I'm here to ask, actually, I was here to ask for two things, but I would like to add a third thing. The first thing is I would like to ask you to reconsider reimbursing me for a claim that I put forward for property damage to Clackamas County. I don't know if you were given the materials that have all of the information supporting my request. And then the second request is to possibly have Overland Road, which is the road I was on when I got the property damaged paved sooner rather than later because I believe it's dangerous and it needs to be addressed. And third, I want to know how to get on the strawberry shortcake and the strawberry wine. So basically, I also have some more information. I have a correction to the information that I gave you. I'm sorry, I didn't see there was actually a response from Clackamas County Roads that gave me information how to request the records I was looking for, which I did yesterday. And I got a response right away from public records saying that I needed to contact the Road and Transportation Department to request those records, and they said that I needed to request them from, with the public record request. So basically, I'm waiting for someone to respond to give me the information. I'm looking forward to find out if, in fact, anybody has reported that road as being unsafe, which I believe that they have. I also have some, I belong to a Milwaukee Chit Chat on Facebook to, for, basically to talk to people in the community about what's going on in my neighborhood. And I have some information that people posted about them reporting and saying that the road was unsafe that I didn't, wasn't able to get to Mr. Matt Carr, and I brought copies to give if you guys would like to see.
Sure. You can present those when you finish, and we can open this up for discussion with staff. Would Gary or Stephen like to comment on this?
I have forwarded to the Board the emails that Ms. Sippowitz has submitted to the county. She made a claim through our third-party administrator, Mike Farrell. He denied it, and she appealed to me, and I supported Mike's denial of the claim itself. This was a, on Overland Road is where it was, between Bell and 82nd. She was driving, she hit a pothole. It resulted in, from what I can tell, a flat tire and a bent rim on her car, and she wanted reimbursement. The county is, you're responsible for premises liability if you have notice of it. If the banana peel is on the floor for two days and you know about it and somebody slips on it, you're liable for that. In this situation, we didn't know about the pothole. As soon as we did, our road crew was out there almost immediately, within the course of hours, from what I understand. So as soon as, we have a pothole hotline as well that our crew responds to. So in the eyes of the law, we don't believe that we are liable for the accident that Ms. Sippowitz was involved in.
So County Road Crew has fixed the pothole and whatever.
Correct, yes. It is a, it's a straight road, and it's, like a lot of others, it has some deteriorating asphalt on it, but it is perfectly passable and drivable in our road crew's estimation.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from Commissioners on this? Commissioner Savis?
Yeah, so earlier this week, I was contacted by a local resident about a pothole on Jennings Avenue, which a similar occurrence happened. They damaged their wheel tire, and it was pretty expensive. Another friend of mine on another county road, same thing on, in his, in his more expensive car, which cost almost $3,000 between the rim and the tire. So this stuff happens. Some of those times are state roads, sometimes they're city roads, and sometimes they're county roads. I will say that in my 12 years, that when someone calls a pop, the pothole hotline, those, those potholes are fixed pretty quickly. So they're very responsive. So I, I do apologize for your situation. I've experienced that myself on State Road nearby. The state does not seem to be as responsive as the county. So my, my accolades to the county staff for getting all over those potholes and fixing them more quickly than, than the, than the state does on the state highways. However, I guess my situation is if we make an exception for one, we need to make an exception for all, and that's probably a bigger policy discussion when it comes to budgeting for that kind of cost. And I've only just gave you two examples, and you've got your own. I didn't even count mine monetarily for my example, but again, not a county road. So I, I apologize for your circumstance.
Commissioner Scholl?
Yes, Ms. Sippowitz, I also want to say, I'm very sorry this happened. You know, I can tell you, when I hit a pothole like that, I get a little bit irritated. But the county's got thousands of miles of roads that they maintain, like Commissioner Savis said. DDT is very responsive to these problems, but in particular, this time of year, I think this just happened recently, yeah, and I read your email, this time of year, potholes can appear just about overnight.
Right.
And it's very difficult to keep up with them, especially when we have the freeze-thaw cycles we've had. cycles we've had in the last month. So again, I'm very sorry. I wish there was something more we could do to help you.
Thank you, Commissioners. I echo the comments of both Commissioners. I too have read your emails, but a ruling has been made on this. I thank you for coming forward today. Is there anything else you would like to say?
Well, I think that, I think that it hinges on whether or not that it was foreseeable that that could happen because of notice prior to me hitting that pothole. And if, have you, did you look at the pictures of the road? How bad the road is? I mean, that, it's definitely something, I know people have reported that road to be unsafe. And I didn't just blow out one tire, it was two tires and they were shredded. And that pothole definitely had been there for a long time. Did you see how deep the pothole was? I mean, I know that somebody reported it, and actually, I have, I don't have the person's name yet because I haven't been able to get in touch with them on Facebook, but someone blew out a tire and a wheel bearing on the same exact area the week before. I'm waiting to get in touch with them, but I just don't think that this is like, I realize there's potholes everywhere, but this road is an extreme example, and I think that it's definitely something that has been reported. People have reported that road as being unsafe. It's in bad shape. I mean, you can't ride a bike, walk on it. When my, I had to wait in the dark for 45 minutes for someone to come and help me because I had to have, there was two tires, so I couldn't just put on the spare tire and get back home. I had to have somebody come and help me patch it up. And it's so uneven and cracked that laying in the road, I mean, you can twist your ankle just walking along the side of the road. You can't ride your bike on that road. I mean, you could, but it, I wouldn't want my daughter to ride her bike on that road. I just think that's an extreme example and that there was definitely notice that that road was in bad shape. And to the county's credit, they did come out and fix the pothole, and it was fixed before I could even get my tire fixed, which I appreciate. However, right now, what they did is fill it in, and it's almost, it's already sunk in and almost in the, about the same, well, not quite as deep as it was, but it's in shape now that someone could definitely have an accident or blow out their tire again because it's just sunk into the ground deeper. It just, they fill it in, they sink. And I think that it's been that way, this road has been that way for a very long time.
Thank you. Commissioner Savas?
Yeah, I just want, I just want to expand on one thing and just take this opportunity to say that, you know, if indeed it was reported and we didn't act, I would be happy to reconsider or ask our Board to reconsider your deal, your situation. But I, it sometimes surprises me that people will not report the potholes, right?
Yeah, I reported it right away.
It's been that way for a month. I go, did you report it?
Yeah, I reported it right away because I didn't want anybody else to have that.
And they said, no, I did. I go, well, you know, our staff, we have, you know, 1,400 miles of roads, county roads, not including city and state roads, so. But it does sometimes astonish me that people think we're not going to fix the pothole, but we do. And I carry, one of my phone numbers, I carry, I read, I just type, I just punch in "pothole" on my, on my directory, and it takes you right to the phone number because I get this number out all the time.
Yeah.
And for those who are watching and listening, the phone number is 503-650-3744. And if you call that, your call will be logged, the location will be logged. Now, sometimes people don't leave the location. I've heard this too. They'll say, oh, it's on X road. X road, they sometimes don't know. And so I encourage people to give as best a location as you can, and they log that. And again, if yours, if there was a logging of that particular pothole, but I also know that on Overland, you talk about Overland and Lynn, that area?
Yeah, well, it's Overland between 82nd and Bell Hill, so that's right there.
And you know there's a lot of construction going on there right now, too, right?
Not on, not, not in that particular area.
At least on Lynn, on Lynn, there's some, some construction going on.
Yeah, Lynn's actually, yeah, there is on Lynn. I actually, I live on Alder Place, which is between Lynn and Bell, so definitely lots of road construction on Lynn, but not on the part of Overland that I'm talking about. And, you know, I do credit the county for coming out very quickly and fixing it. I'm not saying, you know, I'm not trying to, also, one other thing is that I'm just asking for reimbursement, and I did provide support for the reimbursement. I just, I'm not trying to, I understand the floodgates could open on something like this, but I just think this is a particularly extreme case, and I feel like I've supported documentation for that. But I do appreciate the county coming out, and I think the pothole line is a great idea, and I think it made a huge difference. I read that it was established in 97, and there was like $40,000 worth of claims in 1997, and now it's virtually down to nothing, which I think that's great, and I hope that we'll continue to do that. I just think that, I too am like a step away from homelessness. I am a single mom. I take care of my mom who has dementia and my 17-year-old daughter, and I don't get help from her dad. And this, you know, I'm a step away from homelessness all the time. So I'd had to at least come in and try, and I also would really like our road to be safe. So that's really why I'm here today, and I appreciate you listening to at least what I have to say.
Commissioner Savas, would you repeat that pothole number again, please?
Sure. The phone number is 503-650-3744.
And I am still waiting for the information on the logs, and I can definitely get back in touch with you after I've received, see if there was any actual calls on the record. Mr. Matkar and Mr. Farrell said that there wasn't, but like in any proceeding, I would expect some kind of documentation to support that because I think that you'd expect that from me.
We have another Commissioner who would like to speak. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Schrader, go ahead.
That's all right.
Commissioner Schrader, you're up.
So this sounds, it's such a chronic, okay, I'm not an engineer, all right, but this seems to be sinking into Bad Pond Sinkhole. I mean, more, maybe even more than a pothole. Are engineers, we've been out there before? If it's starting to get bad again, can we, I don't know, Gary, can we just get DTD to look at it again and maybe just...
We can ask our staff where this is at in their priority list. As you know, Commissioners, we have 1,700 miles of county-owned roads. We can't fix everything at once, and there's limited funding, but we can certainly check to see where this is at on the priority list.
Yeah, I think that would at least give some, some ease with this, and you're right, we have 1,400 miles of road, but I...
It has been scheduled. It's scheduled for next summer. They have done a study, and it has been scheduled, so they do know the condition.
And we can't pave in this when it's been pouring down rain so much. The weather is inhibiting a lot of our maintenance on county roads right now.
That's true. Right now, if they tried to do it, it wouldn't do any good. It would just keep sinking into the ground. But it is scheduled then, okay. It looks as if it's scheduled, okay.
I just think that this example is pretty, it's pretty extreme. I don't, the pictures pretty much speak for themselves. I just think that...
I looked, I saw them, and I got your email.
They're pretty bad.
Yes, thank you. You know, I live way out in the country, and I drive a lot of county roads, and whenever there's a situation, I try to report it as well, call it and say, hey, this really needs fixed. And it's just, we need to be aware. We can't fix something, of course, if we're not aware, and I thank you for bringing this to our attention. Thank you.
So if I, if I do receive information that shows it's been reported before, who should I forward that to?
Gary Smith?
My cell phone or Mr. Matkar? Either of us?
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming. Up next, Les Poole. Please state your name, area of residence.
Les Poole, I live in the unincorporated part of the county, and I'm here regularly. I'd like to thank you for all the time you just devoted to that issue because it speaks to a bigger issue, and that's transportation and how expensive and important it is. And one of the things I wanted to talk about today, but before I do that, I need to make an announcement. I expect all of you to be at the fair when the Grange folks are there with the best pie you could possibly want. The Grange is near and dear to me because it's, it's, it's an institution that has survived so many things, and it's, it's all about community. It's all about neighbors working together, and the simplicity of it all is astonishing. Interesting that we heard the Grange take a, I'll call it a political position on tolling. Folks, that's how bad this tolling thing is. When was the last time the Grange came in and took a position on something like that? I'd like to thank everyone who has worked to bring it to a public vote and to bring awareness of how the tolling scheme, as I call it, is really set up and how it would work. I want to reiterate that currently, the federal government authorizes tolling for expansion. We're adding lanes to the Baburnathie Bridge. That can be done without a public vote, without any additional or unique changes in laws or policies. But beyond that, of course, the big elephant in the room is the state's plan to toll us on existing lanes and put the money into what I call the vague pot. And so let's continue to pursue resistance to how they want to impose tolling on us. Please go to Clackamas Live at the top of the Clackamas Live Facebook page. You'll find a link to the petition that would require a public vote. So tolling is a big one. Interestingly, here in Pamplin, I don't know if you can see this, but there was an article last week, tolls move, in Oregon move closer to reality with release of the assessment, environmental assessment. Right below that, of course, we have Times Are Tough For Oregon Small Business Owners. No kidding. No kidding. The last thing I'd like to say is that there's a lot of confusion about homelessness, and I appreciate the effort to clarify policy. There was an inordinate number of things that troubled me about how Project Turnkey was going to work at the Clackamas Inn. Not so much Project Turnkey, but what was really going to happen there, and was that the right location? And I'll say again that it really wasn't. The $8 million state grant left us $7 million away from purchasing it, and that didn't allow any money for improvements. So what could we do with that $7 million hypothetically elsewhere is an unanswered question? And the last thing I'll say is that, or I'll just conclude by saying, the, the need out there is for, for more projects like the transitional housing at the Veterans Village. I think that's the best model we have. It doesn't fit everyone, but let's look at working on that model and establishing a policy for homeless housing as the county did so thoroughly to create the zoning and the possibility of having the Veterans Village and addressing the issues ahead of time. So I, I'm certainly disappointed to hear that it's all Chair Smith's fault. It's really not. And some of the news coverage is very personal and gets into the weeds and doesn't even begin to address the enormity of this problem. So I look forward to participating any way I can, and thanks again to Commissioner West and others for trying to solidify our policy.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the room who would like to testify today? Tony, do we have anyone online?
Madam Chair, at this time, I do not have anyone registered. If there is anyone who would like to testify, please use the raise hand feature, and I will call on you in the order received. Madam Chair, do not have any hands raised.
Thank you. I will now close the public portion of this meeting, and we will move on. Gary, what's next?
Next is County Administrator Update. That's me. I like to use this time to share good news of the programs and people of our employees here at Clackamas County. First today, we have an eviction prevention mediation program here at Clackamas County in our Health, Housing and Human Services Department, and recently, this program helped a single parent and their young child remain housed at the 11th hour. A father walked into our coordinated housing access office recently looking for help. He was set to go before a judge in less than 24 hours' time about an immediate eviction notice. County staff sprang to action. One of our mediators called the property owner and worked with the tenant to apply for rental assistance. An agreement was reached immediately, and the eviction was prevented. Not only were the father and the child able to keep a roof over their heads, but the property manager of the place that was evicting this person wrote back, "I want to personally thank you for your time and efforts to not only support the tenant, but us as the landlord as well. I believe this is a beneficial program that has already, and I've already given out information to other, some of our other tenants who are needing support. So thank you to our Health, Housing and Human Services staff for this work supporting our community." Next, our assessor's office received some great kudos from the Canby Fire District. First, our assessor's office every year sends out a value growth estimate to every taxing district in Clackamas County. There are hundreds, over almost 100 taxing districts within Clackamas County, school districts, fire boards, water boards, all of that, cities. The county collects all the property taxes and then distributes it to those taxing districts. The Canby Fire District wrote, "Without the assessor's office, Canby Fire would not have been able to stand as firm on the financial health and stability that we are proud to exemplify today. Specifically, I would like to express to you the incomparable customer service professionalism and incredible skill of Deana Medicon. Throughout the years that I have known Deana, she has been a rare and valuable resource, as well as a vital public service partner striving to help us give the best we can to our citizens. She has helped make that genuine and sincere outcome a reality for us at Canby Fire, and I can't thank her enough." So thank you to Deana on our assessor staff and all of our assessor staff for all they do every day to help our public and our taxing districts in Clackamas County. That is my update for today, Commissioners.
Thank you, Gary. Now it's time for Commissioner Communication. Commissioner West, you're up first.
Yeah, it's been a, it's been a busy week, and I want to take another moment to thank the dialogue that I was able to have with the staff with Governor Kotek's office, and some of the things that came out of that conversation were where we had common ground and shared goals on this issue regarding recovery-oriented systems of care and recovery housing, recovery centers and things to help people recover. And I wanted to let the Board know I will be forwarding my response to her to the rest of you so you can see that clear communication. She did provide a letter that I referenced in the last meeting that is public, and then I would like to just make sure that I'm transparent in my response to her to this Board so they can be aware of that communication. And I don't think I have much to add. Running around, we had the state of the county yesterday, that was my first one. So that was a fun adventure. I was just kind of like, what's next? What's going, you know, I was kind of a little bright-eyed during the whole experience, but I think everybody did a great job. Patrick Sheehan was a hilarious host, and he had the room in stitches, and so that was a lot of fun, which, as we know, he can do. So that was a really good time. And we'll see, still having opportunity, I got a chance to kind of meet with the Arts Alliance this morning and figure out more about how we support culture and arts in our community, which I think is so important. Talked a little about, about even the big, the big project at the courthouse coming up regarding the community art in the courthouse. Had the opportunity to spend some time with the various members in our community, and it's been a really productive week and busy for all of us. So I'll leave it at that. I've said a lot already today, but having fun and enjoy serving the public.
Thank you, Commissioner West. Commissioner Scholl, you're up.
Yes, good morning, Clackamas County. On schools, 16 May special election. A lot of school board positions are up for election. This is a very, very important election. Please look at your candidates, know who they are. Double-check your voting registration at oregonvotes.gov. Please ensure your new school board members will focus on improving education in our K-12 schools in Clackamas County. On tolls, take action now. If you commute on I-205 back and forth five days a week, you're going to be looking at $2,012. That's for just five days a week, a year. If your spouse goes to work or takes the kids to school on that same route, that's another $2,000. So if tolling happens on I-205 for some people, it would become your third highest tax after federal and state income tax. Get involved. VoteBeforeTolls.org. Download the IP petition and circulate that. We need those signatures. Also, support Senate Bill 933 and House Bill 2629. Contact your state senator and your state rep on that, please, today. On the question, can the state of Oregon afford to pay the $350 million to expand I-205 without tolling? Well, the current biennial budget at the state is $112.8 billion. There's talk that depending on what the legislature does during this budget cycle, it could grow to $140 billion. Could the state... Could the state pull out $175 million a year for two years to pay for that $350 million? You decide. On the Quality Inn and the Turnkey Project, we had a very vibrant public input on the issue, and whether or not it went the way you hoped it would, I would like to thank every resident of Clackamas County who called, testified, emailed, met me or other commissioners for coffee to express your opinions and ideas for dealing with the homeless addiction, mental health, and the economic drivers of homelessness as well. The county staff will continue to work through our housing programs, mental health clinics throughout the county, and our legislative staff will continue to reach out to Salem to make impact on the issues that affect these problems in Clackamas County. Again, your ideas always shape decision-making here at the board, and I thank every one of you for your time and effort. On the thought of the day, personal responsibility is key, and one of my concerns is that the county, when we work with those in need, we offer a hand up and not necessarily a hand out. And the element of personal responsibility is key in overcoming problems like homelessness. So again, we will strive in this county to do whatever we can to alleviate those problems that cause people to lose their dignity and feel like there's no hope. There is hope in Clackamas County, and we'll continue to work with you on that. And finally, I'd like to wish everyone a happy Easter Sunday, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Commissioner Scholl. Commissioner Savas, you're up next.
Yeah, just kind of building on a conversation we had on Tuesday a little bit about some of the statistics surrounding the people that are falling to homelessness, I have a little bit more information, and I know that our staff forwarded that to our commissioners, and I'm not sure they got all of it, but I just did, did dig up some of my references. But I do want to just briefly talk about the first point-in-time homeless count I did over 10 years ago. And so we, basically, the point-in-time count, you actually, you have a series of questions you ask people that are homeless, and there's parameters around that, so you really can't ask them any, any questions that are not, not compatible with the federal requirements and so forth. So, but in that conversation, the first, the first folks I interviewed was a man and a woman, husband and wife, and their child. Of course, I didn't talk to the child. I spoke to the, to the husband and wife and interviewed them, and their circumstances were back in, in 2011, I believe. Their circumstances were that they were both employed, they just lost their apartment, they were homeless, and they were there at the particular facility for food is where they were at that particular day. But one of the barriers for them was the fact that the, the husband had a misdemeanor on his record, and therefore, he was having a hard time qualifying for another apartment. And so it was a barrier for a while, and they had, they had been homeless for a couple, three months at that particular point in time. So it opened my eyes, because at that point in time, I just, I, like a lot of other people, made the assumption that what's visible to the public is maybe the norm, right? I mean, that's, that's, that's that. But I also, with respect to, you know, when I was going to school, I had some very financially difficult times, and it didn't get me as far along in school as I wanted to go, but nonetheless, you know, I spent some time living in my van. When I started my business, when I moved to Oregon in Lane County, I lived on a friend's sofa for over a year while I was trying to start my business. So I, what I learned out of all this is that the definition of homeless by federal standards is, you know, really covers all that. So when I give you some of these stats, and I'm speaking to the public in particular, but also my colleagues, so I speak to the staff, we got to be mindful that, we all know that when you do the point-in-time count, it's, it's, there's some paid people that do that, and there's also volunteers. And so we have had a long, a difficult time in the last several point-in-time counts because of COVID, getting people to participate. So we're, we always know that we're undercounting, but we feel in the last couple of years that the numbers are somewhat undercounted because the staffing levels are down and the volunteers are down, so they're not as robust as what normally would be. So I talked about homeless students, for example. So the homeless student count on a 2018 to 2019 school year, this was put together by the School District Homeless Liaisons, had reported 1,113 students in the school year. Also reminded that that's students that are registered and going to school. That is not children that are maybe homeless, not going to school, and, and/or they're attempted to be somewhat homeschooled without a roof, maybe in their car, being homeschooled. So there's, there's a tremendous undercount. Of that 1,113 students, 282 of them were reported as unaccompanied youth, meaning there's no parent. 65 were living in shelters, 806 were doubled up in situations, 131 were living unsheltered, and 71 were living in motels. That's the 2018, 2019 numbers. Again, we all know that these are undercounts, and these are the only, these are only the students that are registered in schools. So the other number, and I know my colleagues got this in an email, but I thought it's important, and the challenge with these numbers is, is that some people can, can answer the quest, ask several questions. So, for example, the very top one, can't afford rent. That was the top number-one reason why people are homeless. Their second one is unemployed, which is also an economic factor. But there's a number of things, there's a whole page of different things where, why or how they fell into homelessness. But some of these people can report multiples. So when you see someone that says can't afford rent, they can also say, hey, I was also unemployed, and oh, by the way, maybe, maybe I do or don't have a, a foreclosure or some kind of other, other issue going on, maybe domestic violence, or maybe there's child abuse happening. But there's a number of things that, that can, people can, can answer as many of these as they want. Actually, they can answer all of them if they choose. So we can't double count, but we have to factor in that, that they did, they possibly did. We have to factor in the double counting or triple counting. So the top, the top five, I'll just read the top five and stop there, but I think this is kind of interesting. The top five reasons, and these, these are people that are homeless, and I've done, again, every point-in-time count since I've been elected. Can't afford rent, number one. Unemployed, number two. Conflict with family and/or housemates. Number four, mental or emotional health issues. And number five, they were evicted. Those are the top five. Down the list, you'll find drug alcohol, and farther down the list, you'll find drug alcohol issues and/or others. So there's a lot of things on here, but I think it's interesting numbers. And, you know, my concern is typically has been that I think a lot, again, people see, and people tell me, well, Paul, there's two types of homeless, the visible and the non-visible. The visible that people see, and of course, when you drive into Portland, you see a different type of population in Portland than you do in Clackamas County, and obviously, a different scale or amount. So I always try to be mindful that not all people fit into one box, and stereotyping them is, I think, a confusion that is, is made. Lastly, I, I just want to just be mindful that I appreciate what is in the, in the script when we open these meetings, and I just want to read one line that, that, you know, I know we abide by, so I just want to read it, and I'm going to highlight, emphasize a particular word here or a couple of words. And this is typically what the chair reads when we open the meeting. "I would like to remind all participants, including staff, comma, all elected officials, of which I am one, comma, and members of the public, which I am also one, that Robert's Rules of Order will be enforced in this business meeting." Chair, that concludes my thoughts for today.
Commissioner Schrader, you're up.
Yeah, thanks, everybody. I actually have a few things today that I think I'd really like to talk about a little bit, and first of all, again, we, we do recognize that houselessness is a continuum, and that our working poor is part of that continuum, as well as the folks who have mental health issues, psychiatric issues, addiction issues as well. It's a continuum. So really, how do we address, our, our task is how do we address along this continuum? And there is a group out there that I wanted to mention today. I think all of us know them, and that's the Homeless Solutions Coalition of Clackamas County. And they have been for the past year and a half, two years or, or longer. Actually, they started in 2016. I take that back, they've been around for a while. They include Clackamas County, our district attorney, Clackamas Service Center, Equimetal Ministries, Hillside Christian Fellowship, our law enforcement assisted diversion. That's a, that's one thing to get people, I hope, clean and sober. Lomond Municipalities, the City of Oregon City, the Oregon City Police Department, Providence Better Outcomes Through Bridges, the Storyline Community, Teen Challenge, The Father's Heart, and there are many more, including, I like, always like to give a shout-out to Kaiser because I think that they've been a champion of this and actually have grants available to supply medical help at some of the facilities. But in any case, the reason I'm mentioning them is that they are going to be rolling out a conversation in April, and what they're looking at is basically what they call a navigation center in the Two Rivers neighborhood in, of Oregon City. And the center will offer space to local service providers to more effectively and efficiently serve our unhoused neighbors with a variety of needs. Now, this is like a piece where people can come in to a one-stop, get assessed, and get set somewhere, and they're going to be having conversations throughout the month of April, starting April 18th, a neighborhood meeting, Good Morning Oregon City, another neighborhood meeting at the Abernathy Center. They're going to have a general audience via Zoom. They will, well, they will end this with a conversation at the Oregon City Business Alliance. You can find this information at hsccc.org. And I believe it's going to be successful because they spent a long time in their community with various partners, including the business community, who are actually giving money towards this. It's been spearheaded by a man who is one of the largest landowners and developer in the, you know, Dan Fowler, he was there at the, at the event the other day. Lori Oland, of course, owns that building. It's Miles Fiber Glass, so we have some heavy hitters from the business community that I believe are stepping up to the plate to really help us get there. But they know that now that they've gotten people excited and donations in, they need to be setting the table even more with these community conversations. And wouldn't it be nice if part of, not at the navigation center, but if we could somehow, Commissioner Ben, see about a recovery center? That would be, which is what you've been working on, which I think is fantastic. If that could be not necessarily housed there, but that would be one of the opportunities for an additional space to get people to for what they need. So I don't see it as an either-or, but this is an opportunity to have a navigation center and then have that gap piece with people who are having addictions and so on and so forth, get the services they need. So please, the public out there, this community, Oregon City, has been phenomenal. The Oregon City Business Alliance has been phenomenal. They've kind of grabbed this issue by the, you know, by the horn, and they are wrestling with it, and they've really managed to do something, I think, really fantastic about it, and I think they're going to have quite a success. So please, go there in February. I, I will probably attend a virtual meeting. I have other things going on that month, but I am aware of it and would like everyone else to be aware of it as well. The other thing I'd like to talk about is Water and Environment Services, because it's one of my favorite groups of people to work with, and just some news from them. Of course, we approved the key policy proposals as presented in a West Rules and Standards update, and that's going to be adopted at a future public hearing. The first reading, I know Chair will be taking place at April 13th at 6:00 p.m. So if you have any questions about the public healing, contact Ron Wierenga. And he is, works for Wes, and it's R-Wi-Reng, I can't pronounce his last name, but if, but, you know, go ahead and give Wes a call, and you can find out about that. And then there is an outdoor activity this spring, and it's going to be the Salf kickoff in Gladstone on Thursday, May 18th at 9:00 a.m. And go ahead to the West website, and it's going to be Meldrum Bar Park Cleanup Event along the Willamette and Clackamas Rivers. I'm planning on going to that. It sounds like a lot of fun. And then they're going to do a lunch and learn on climate resiliency on Wednesday, May 31st, from 12:00 to 1:00 p.m. And they will be sending out an e-blast with more information about that, and I think that's going to be, again, something I think I plan to go to, and I hope my colleagues plan to do that, too. Finally, I had a really great time on Sunday. I missed you, though, Commissioner Scholl, but thank you, I got to, yeah, it was fantastic. I went to the Forest Forever's event, where they have opened up right now a new visitors' center and a center for research folks to actually stay there and do research and have an opportunity to do studies there, and it's called the Forestry and Natural Resources Outreach Center. And it is absolutely phenomenal. It's a beautiful facility. One of the movers and shakers is Ken Everett, who's the Executive Director of Forest Forever. I've known him for a while. He said, well, I followed you through the years, Martha, and I was like, okay. I hope that's a good thing. I think it is. I think it is. Anyhow, beautiful center, saw my dear friend Mike Bondi. I'm really excited because way back in the day when I first moved here to Oregon, way back in 1979, so I'm almost a native Oregonian, I don't have multiple generations, but I'm getting there. I taught at the farm, at the, at the forestry center. I was a young, young graduate student who had just graduated, moved to Oregon, had a little girl, and I got a job with the Forestry Center and the Washington Park Zoo called TAG, Talented and Gifted in Rural Schools. And I was one of the educators that would go out to the rural schools in our community, and we would do science and environmental education work with them, and it was really one of the most fun times of my life. I loved doing that. And this, the Hopkins Forest was one of the places we brought kids to. We did field work with them, we did stream work with them, we did temperatures, we identified, you know, all the creatures that are, you know, near the water, salamanders, insects, you name it, we did it. And I met the new education guy, and I got pretty excited, and he goes, well, do you want to come back and teach? And I said, yeah, let's do that. So I might have some extracurricular activities, even though I'm a commissioner, maybe on the weekends, and maybe some other days where I can start working with kids again because I really miss it, and this facility is fantastic. So that's the news from Lake Bobagon. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Commissioner Schrader. Regarding the Navigation Center, those events that you talked about for meeting the public and getting public input are happening April 18, 19, and 20, and there are at least two a day. They will be coming before the Board of County Commissioners, and I believe Oregon City Council as well. I did talk to the principals at the Navigation Center and asked them if they would be interested in providing a place for a treatment center. And he talked it over and called me back, and he says, how many square feet do you want? So Commissioners, how many square feet do we want? And they have an architect firm they have hired to do the remodeling and create these spaces, and this architect firm designed spaces that are called trauma-informed design. And it's really holistic for this purpose. So anybody can let Dan know how much square footage. I did talk to Commissioner West about this because he had viewed places like this before, and he mentioned all these acutriments and this place. and he mentioned all these utterments and accoutrements, and this place will already have those. Washington County has gone ahead with constructing a treatment center, quite expensive, it's inpatient, outpatient, short-term and long-term, and for treatment of any addictions and/or mental illness. All four modalities need to be considered in order to be successful because not every person is the same. Just wanted to let you folks know that. Just in, ODOT has denied our second request to extend the comment period beyond 60 days. We asked for 90 days, they denied that request. That also affects the public's ability to weigh in on this. Additionally, on April 12th and again on April 19th, please stay tuned to our policy meetings as we will be returning, staff will be returning with their analysis of the environmental assessment that we will be using to challenge ODOT on tolling. So, stay tuned for that. Commissioner Scholl, you mentioned that, did I hear this right, you said the Oregon Legislature budget is over $140 billion?
For this current biennial, it's $112.8 billion. And there's been some talk in the legislature about increasing the budget. Some people have suggested as much as 25%. Well, the shocking thing about that, if that were to happen, you'd be looking at the next biennial of $140 billion, all coming out of your pocket, mine, and the residents of Clackamas County.
That's very interesting, $112 billion.
Yeah, and so, my, I brought that up, Chair Smith, because, you know, $350 million compared to even $112 billion is like the change in your purse. It's small peanuts. So, tolling is not about paying for infrastructure. ODOT's plan to toll you is to toll you for a long, long time, your kids, your grandkids, and, yes, and beyond.
Well, the analogy I was going to make, today, it's about $112 billion, but when I served in the legislature, and I left in 2005, the budget was $30 billion. So, it keeps growing and growing and growing because the legislature and our governor keeps inventing new ways to increase taxes on people. I'd like to talk about the courthouse. We are, Martha Schrader and I are on the Community Art Committee. We are determined to have art in very specific places in the courthouse. It will not be taxpayer-funded, we will use no taxpayer dollars for this. Instead, we are going to be fundraising, asking people to donate, and possibly having artists donate as well. So, if anybody wants any information on that, contact our BCC offices. I have some very good news. The RV bill, as we affectionately call it, has passed out of the Senate 27 to 1, and it's on its way to the House. The RV bill is something, an idea that I came up with because of a constituent was kicked off a piece of property because she was living in an RV on her sister's property in unincorporated Clackamas County. The sister's husband had died, they had lost their home, she had two children. It was in code violation. So, what turned out to be, I thought, a code violation was actually a state land use decision. So, it looks like that's going to head to the House of Representatives. I expect it will pass, it might have some revisions, that's fine, it's up to the legislature. But what this does, it allows an RV to be parked in unincorporated Clackamas County outside the urban growth boundary, one RV, for somebody to live in, and the other sideboards to it, but this will help some of our homeless population. We also have Easter. Tomorrow is Good Friday, if you are an observer, and Easter is a Sunday. I hope it's not pouring down rain. And Commissioners, I appreciate all of you in attendance, hearing no further business before this board. We are adjourned.